All right, I'd like to call it over to the special called meeting of the Mecklenburg County School Board. Madam Clerk may have a roll call, please.
Mr. Sturtevant.
Present.
Mrs. Bailey is absent. Mr. Palmer is absent. Mr. Honeycutt?
Present.
Mr. Campbell?
Present.
Mrs. Garner is absent. Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Edwards?
Present.
Mr. Ritchie?
Present.
May I have a motion that the school board adopts tonight's agenda?
So, a minute.
I have a motion from Mr. Honeycutt, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturtevant?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. All right. Mr. Superintendent, I guess we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. I'm very pleased and very thankful to each of you that were able to make it tonight. This is a meeting where the architects are going to be coming in. They are going to be talking about the plans as have been developed so far. They are doing this so that you will have a chance to ask questions, but also so that on this coming Monday night, we will be able to approve this first phase and then move on to the second phase where they begin putting many of the systems in place. Mr. Upton and his associates will be explaining these, going through a variety of components that I think you'll find very interesting. We were pleased to be able to get to you larger plans so that as he talks about them on the screen, you can also look on yours and be able to read them and ask questions and talk about the program. One thing that I will mention before we go in is you gave me the authority to negotiate the purchase of the property where the new road will go in right in here. We have gone through that process and all of the legal programs have taken place. It's just a matter of paying for it at this point. So, I'll be filling you in on that as well for your vote to purchase that Monday night meeting, but that piece is in place. And what you see is what the... You will have opportunity again to go over, and I think there's a lot of information. So, was there further ado, Mr. Upton?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Nichols.
It's active now.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. It's so good to be with you. I appreciate you and Mr. Chairman and members of the school board. It's great to be able to take time tonight to update you on the project. And what we've done is presented and prepared the design development portion of the work. You know, the main, the first step after getting the programming done was the schematic design. That was completed and approved, and then we were authorized to go into the design development phase, and that's the phase that we just are completing and talking to you about tonight. We will present that to you in summary fashion, but we are here to answer any questions or spend as much time going into detail that you choose. We are going to try to respect your time and do a summary, but you tell us because we're here. It's your pleasure. And then if you give the approval to move ahead to go to construction documents, what we will do is prepare the documents for bidding and construction based on what you see here in front of you, which is part of it, and we have a large set of drawings that we're turning over with a lot more detail in it. We will advance that detailed information to the point where the contractor can construct the building. So, we... And if we get the approval, we are so close to the date that we were started with as far as the schedule, we can still maintain the schedule and have the documents ready to go to bid per the original schedule. So, we're excited about that. And the reason we're able to do that is Mr. Nichols and your staff have been working really hard. They have had no mercy on us, asking for changes and adjustments and all. So, we've responded, and my staff has worked hard, and my team and quite a few of them are here tonight, which will be speaking to you. But I told them they have to be briefed tonight until you start asking questions, then they go to wherever point you want to go. So, we are excited. We appreciate the opportunity. I can't tell you that there's a project that is more important to me personally than to working with you, and it's nothing more important to me than to make this the most perfect building we possibly can. And we're struggling hard to do that. We're making good progress, and we are working hard to also keep it on schedule and under budget. We want to keep all the commitments, the obligations that you've charged us with, and so far, we are very much on track to do that. So, what we hope to do with your permission is we are going to review, and I'm going to get Mr. Sam Carroll to come up and start, and he's, of course, in charge of the site, and site's usually the first thing you do. But there's another important part. His son has a birthday tonight, and we promised we'd let him be first so he could go join his son for the birthday. And then we will keep Pace, our mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineers here, and let them stay a little longer with us tonight because they said they really wanted to do that. I didn't hear that, but they probably were thinking it anyway. So, Sam, could you come up and talk about the site, and then we will go from there? Thank you.
Sam, let me see if I can...
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, everyone. I think I might owe everyone dinner for this. Yeah, okay, good. So, here's our site layout, and what I want to try to do just real quick is take this 2D image and help you maybe visualize how the thing will look. The main part of the site, the school and the parking lots around it, including the main football stadium, tennis courts, and the soccer field are all pretty much going to be on the same plane, the same level. Of course, sloping gently for drainage and grades. And that level is about the same level with the intersection here, Route 4. So, that... When you come up to Route 4 now, that big cut that you see there, all that, we're going to use that dirt, cut that down to fill the hole in by the school that's on the west side. And so, you'll have a nice view from the intersection here right into the whole school complex. The baseball fields, the high school baseball fields back here, that does have to drop down quite a bit. It's about 15 to 20-foot elevation change, but it's over a fairly good distance. It's hard to see on this small image here, but we'll have to drop down to get that at the level for those fields. And the same with the middle school fields. That's about 20 to 25 feet lower than this area up here, and that'll ramp down this road here to get down to that level. But then all the fields down here will be within a few feet of each other. So, trying to, again, make everything nice as uniform as can be. Keeping in mind, this site has 120-foot of elevation change across it. So, it's... We've got our challenges with it. Parking-wise, the student parking, staff parking, and the high school staff parking, middle school parking, staff parking, excuse me, visitor parking up front here, we've got a total of about 944 spaces all around. We also put some parking because of how far away the fields are, some parking. This is 40 stalls down here by the middle school and about 46 parking stalls up here by the high school baseball fields. And please just stop me if anyone has any questions. Otherwise, I'm just going to keep rolling through here. We put, as you see here, the fields, middle school, the primary football field with track around it, practice football field, soccer field, baseball and softball field. On the high school side, the main high school football field with track, field house, soccer field, the baseball, softball, and then a practice field over here. There is a creek that is remaining, cutting through here, and so we've got a walking path to get over to here. I know there's some question whether or not that stays in or not, but that's the location for it there. And eight tennis courts. Some of the site features, you'll hear the MEP guys talking about the central plant. That's in this location right here where all your, I think the heating and cooling equipment are, propane tanks and generator and yards behind that. So, that's its location here off at the back of the school. And this is the bus 70-stall bus parking lot right there. And we also have a two-bay diesel fuel island down here for buses, and there's been talk about a 10,000-gallon above-ground fuel tank to serve those. And so, buses will be able to come down here, one pull in and fill up, another can loop around and pull in and fill up and go on out. Stormwater-wise, we've got a minimum of four stormwater management basins around the site that we're going to need. These probably mostly be wet ponds. If there's any steep slopes like this one, it'll probably have a steep slope down to it back here. We want to fence and try to really almost hide it. Whereas opposed to the ones up front here, we're going to make them more, much more aesthetically pleasing, trying to make it kind of natural landscape and having air raiders in them so it actually looks like an amenity, not just something for stormwater management. And other than that, utility-wise, we're able to gravity sewer from the field house here all the way down to the pump station. So, no onsite pump stations unless there was some talk about if they're... We're not planning for bathrooms or anything up here at the baseball fields using the bathrooms in here. And then water coming underneath 58 with the eight-inch water line and looping all the way around the complex, having one master water meter to serve the whole facility. So... Any questions? I know it was a brief overview of things. I can go much more in detail if you like or...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, yes. Sam, I do have a couple of questions. First of all, do we know how many students on average drive to school every day at Parkview and Bluestone? We have had a count of that. The highway department did a count of that from what it's currently doing for the middle schools and the high schools. Do we know what that total is? Do we... It was somewhere close to 300. 300 cars? Yes. Okay.
And that's 517 spaces there.
Okay. And then how many... And where was the... Can you... You're talking about the ones driving and letting students off? No, 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 no. I'm talking about actual car drivers that drive to school. They did a count of that as well, and I don't have that number off the top of my head. Okay. And how many spaces do we have allotted for faculty? And is that on both sides?
Yes. So, I'll run them through here real quick. So, high school student parking, about 517 spaces. High school staff, about 131 spaces. Middle school staff, there are about 200 spaces on that side. Not that we think one needs more than the other, we just have more room over there. And visitor space is about 95 up front here. We can... There's room for expansion if for some reason we felt there was more. I think that number's more than adequate, or we can reduce it down to save some money if you feel that's way too many.
Okay.
But that's the target numbers we've been working with.
And if you'll go back to the top, the... For the high school, yes, weren't it... Were those car spaces in there?
No, not any... I didn't... Not any of those numbers I counted for. Up here, there is about 46 car spaces.
Okay.
And 40 over here. 46, this is about maxed out up here. We're running out of space there. Here, we could easily add more spaces if y'all felt it was necessary.
Okay, but that's all. What is this? I might. I'd like to just point out, because it's a specific question and it's an appropriate one, we have an area for the barn and the agriculture area, but we're not looking at... There's no lack of commitment to that because it's not filled in here. We have a significant commitment to that, but not to be designed by Alu, Justice, and Upton. We're getting the community involved in what all, including the police department, is needed in that for staging area. And so, that could even go in possibly before the whole rest of the program is built. It's just a matter of who's designing it and how we're putting it in, but that's a significant commitment to that.
Okay. What I'll do is take that impervious area, as we call it, and account for it in the stormwater management.
Right.
That way, there's no issues, then y'all just build what you need to for that. And if you think there needs to be some pad graded for that ahead of time, we could probably put that in the contract. Because right now, it does have quite a bit of slope over it. I'm not sure how involved you all want to be with that.
Are you talking about the slope area where the... I'm sorry, where the future... Where it says future ag barn?
Yes. Yeah, there's about five to seven feet of slope from one side to the other.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea because there's no doubt we're going to have a barn there. So, Mr. Edwards, what do you think as far as getting it graded in the beginning so when the barn does come, the site is already established?
Yeah, I mean, we should. Absolutely. If we have the money.
Well, my question is, I have a commitment to send my kids to college and do the best I can for them, but do we have the funding?
Just grading the pad for that, and I mean, that's about 2%, 3%, not even maybe 1% of the overall earthworks, it's not really going to add anything to the contract.
Yeah, I don't know if that question was specifically directed at you or...
I'm sorry.
Mr. Nichols. I mean, it's one thing to have a commitment to build it, but do we have funding?
Well, you know, we've always talked about, and we particularly talked about it at the last board meeting, that with all of the fields and components related that are like the auxiliary gym in the middle school, we're looking at the area for the instructional issues here. We won't know about the total funding until we have a chance for companies to bid on it when it comes in. When I mentioned that that is a significant piece, that's an instructional piece. And so, it's... That is a high priority component compared to some other things that we have. It's just that it's... Even when we first went to the board of supervisors with plans asking for the extra 20 million, we stated that as the architects would render that, it would have a classroom, it would be significant in its cost for what they would be looking at. We have numbers of partners in the community that are so interested in that piece of it. I'm confident we're going to be able to put that in as a part of the initial piece that we do. It's a... It is a priority item.
So, the answer is no?
I think the answer is yes.
So, we have funding set aside for it?
We... Yes, we have funding that will be set aside for that piece to go in, just as we have for the rest of it.
Okay. Any more questions for the engineers? Nope. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
We appreciate mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineers, and this is Pace, and we're going to have their team led by Eddie Abrams. So, Eddie, we'd like for you and your team to come up and give us a summary of those systems, please.
Good evening. I'm Eddie Abrams, Vice President of Pace Collaborative, and we're the mechanical, electrical engineers for the project. As Sam has already alluded to and spoken about the site, I'll start with the site here. Okay. My specific discipline is electrical, so I'll speak mostly to the electrical, and I'll bring up JT to talk about mechanical, and Dennis Boggs will... I'll bring him up to talk about fire protection. This is a good place to start with the electrical. As Sam said, we do have a central plant, central utility plant there, and JT will go into detail about what's in there. We do have an emergency generator back there that will feed the main building. The electrical power will come from Mecklenburg Power down through here along this road. From what we understand, we've been meeting with them and talking to them. There'll be a transformer to feed the main high school. There'll be a transformer back here for the central plant. We'll have another transformer back here for the... These ball fields for the lighting and the athletic field lighting. The... Right now, we're in discussions about how much of this lighting is going to be in the project, and I know that's a budgetary thing for future discussion. But we've also planned on lighting and power down here for these ball fields and the restroom area for the middle school athletic facilities. And of course, we have the fueling station down there as well. Going back to the main site building here, the parking lot will be illuminated, of course. All lighting in the project right now is being designed with LED lighting. The parking lot lighting in particular, we were talking earlier, and we're going to make that lighting, it'll have some special controls for, you know, high-low. When there's not much going on, we'll have some safety lighting. Then, and when there's activity in the parking lot, the lighting will come up to full brightness and go back. It's just... It's good design, and these fixtures are dark sky compliant. There'll be no light going up in the sky. It's all downward lighting. I think you said earlier that we can adjust that lighting, that motion sensor, if someone without that light... That's right, Bill. We have... We are looking at... We are looking at a system which I'm using on some other facilities where each individual fixture on the pole is an IP address, and you can program those fixtures with motion sensor built into the fixtures, photo cells. Gives you more control. And then, of course, at night, when there's nothing going on at the school, it's dark and saves energy, and again, it's good design. But if anybody goes into the site, the lights come on, and it's still safe. We have plans for a sign. We're debating on whether or not the sign is going to be at this intersection or here, but we're... There'll be an electrically powered sign with controls inside of the school as well. So, let's see. I'll go to the next slide, the building, inside the building? Yes. Okay. All right. So, this is the architectural plan for the building. The main electrical room is right back here, pad mounted transformer. We... There's a switchboard here. Fire pump room is right there. We have, in various locations, in every wing, we have one or two electrical rooms where... So, we're distributing it at 480 volts out to these rooms, and then we step the voltage down for all, what we call the utilization voltage, the 120, 208 volt systems that we're all familiar with, the plugs and so forth. Again, all lighting in the building will be LED lighting. We will have, by the energy code requirements and, of course, good design, we're going to have some control systems. Some areas probably will have some motion sensor or vacancy sensor controls, but we're going to try to integrate the lighting system controls with the DDC system or some control system that's a time of day so that we still have the... We still meet the energy code, but it's a more user-maintenance-friendly system. The canopies will be illuminated. We have lighting... We have canopies out back. Those will be illuminated as well. Of course, the gymnasiums will be illuminated. The cafeteria eating, the kitchen is right in here. We have power going to the kitchen. The auditorium will have theatrical lighting systems in it. I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Yeah, I will mention that. So, similar to the power distribution, we have telecom rooms in various locations in all of the wings to serve the needs of those wings. So, all of the telecommunications for, say, this area will go back to that telecommunication room. You know, we've got CCTV cameras. We have access control points. We have wireless access points, which are, I understand, are going to be in each of the classrooms, and throughout the building, there'll be wireless access. And of course, telephone in all of the classrooms and all of the spaces as well. Everything will be networked. It's a fully... I don't like the word "modern," but it's a very modern, state-of-the-art facility when it comes to telecommunications. And, okay, let me go back to the site. JT, do you want to come up?
Sir, I'm sorry.
Yes, if you have any questions.
Yes, sir, I do have a question. I just want to make sure I heard you correctly because I do have a hard time hearing this ear.
I'm sorry. I was stepping away from the microphone a little bit there.
When you were talking about the lighting around the ball fields and all, and you said that was proposed or something we're looking at in the future, are we going to bid it that way?
We have...
So, we have lighting all over all of these places on the campus?
Right now, our design has all of the fields illuminated, except the practice fields. We're not lighting the practice fields.
Okay, but everything, the initial, I mean, the key areas that will be bid now?
Yes. And it's... And again, it's LED lighting, and we have a control system for those, too.
Yes, sir.
It's the beauty of LED lighting because you can do so many different things with controls. So, for example, at the main stadium, if they're just practicing before a game, the coach can come to the control cabinet, and he'll have access to a control panel that will allow him to set practice lighting, maybe not full lighting. There's no sense in running all of the lights. It'd be half-bright, for example. Same thing for the ball... For the baseball fields, the soccer fields as well. And then, you know, on game day, you hit the lighting... You hit the button for the lighting, it goes up to full brightness for the amount of time that you need. When you're getting ready to leave, you hit that button, and it gives you time for everybody to leave as well. So, it's really a nice system. In the old days, when I did these, you had contactors. You had a whole room full of contactors, very, you know, labor-intensive, so.
If you don't mind, before going into the...
Okay.
Something we talked about earlier, and I want to make sure. What we are going to have here is simulcasting, as we talked about, from the auditorium to the dining areas, both dining rooms, and also to the main gym. We decided we probably didn't need to do it there. That would have its independent system, but full simulcast with quality sound system to... From the auditorium to these spaces here. So, we think that will give you... I mean, that's going to give you a tremendous capacity. So, I wanted to make sure that we hadn't overlooked that.
Right, I apologize. Okay. JT, you want to come up?
All right, cool. Good evening, everyone. My name is JT Smith, mechanical engineer with Pace Collaborative. I'm going to do a pretty high-level overview of the HVAC system, the majority of which is out at the central plant that Eddie talked about. See if we can get back to that area. So, out of the central plant here is going to be the majority of the infrastructure that's going to take care of heating, cooling the building. The main pieces out there are going to be a three-cell open cooling tower, associated condenser water pumps, and then centrifugal chillers. There'll be three of those chillers, then also a boiler station for hot water. So, the system in the main building is going to be hydronic. Also out there at the main building, we'll have a yard that will have a generator in it, and then two propane tanks, which will be the fuel source for the boilers.
Excuse me. Could you make sure that microphone's pulled a little closer so we can...
Sure, yeah, sorry about that.
On the recording, it just won't come through at all.
Is that any better?
Yeah. Or you can move the microphone closer to where you want to stand. It'd be fine. Just pull the whole thing.
Okay. All right. So, at the central plant, we're basically generating hot water and chilled water for distribution to the main building. That will be accomplished via piping trenches. So, in this area here is one point we'll come across, and then also, there'll be a second down in this area where we'll bring that piping across and then distribute that out up to the roof and out to a series of VAV air handlers. Those will be, for the most part, roof-mounted in the back area here. There will be a few that will be contained in available attic space up here in the front. So, something like that. I think there are three or four of them that will be in attic space there. So, those will be where the main heating and cooling happens. Downstream of those, we'll have a series of fan-powered and shut-off VAV boxes. Those will control individual zone temperatures at all of your spaces in here. Important thing to note is every classroom will have its own thermal controls, its own thermostat. In a couple places, such as the admin areas up here in the front, we'll lump some offices together that are nearby, just as a cost-saving measure.
I'll add, too, that the IT rooms are all going to have a dedicated ductless split system, a small dedicated air conditioning system, and some ventilation as well.
Yes, and electrical rooms as well, the same scenario. Let's see. So, up here in some of the larger gathering spaces, such as the gyms, where we don't anticipate having ceilings, you'll see exposed ductwork spiral around with drum-type diffusers for distribution up there, most likely similar in the cafeteria areas. And those will... Each gym, each cafeteria, and the kitchen will have their own dedicated units on the roof. We'll work closely with the kitchen equipment vendors to make sure we take care of the roof requirements for the... of the roof requirements for their hoods and such in the kitchen, exhaust and makeup air. And, let's see, the other big space is the auditorium here in the middle. Currently, we have that set up with two dedicated units, one on either side, to supply that area. We've currently designed with a full BAS control system, building automation system, to link all these different pieces together. And that can be brought back to remote monitoring station in the maintenance office. We should talk with Brian earlier about that. So, I think that's about it for the main building. The only other thing I need to mention is the outbuildings here, high school and middle school field houses. Currently, we show them heating and ventilating only, but we heard earlier today that there's a request to air condition those things as well. So, we'll be pulling that in moving forward. Am I forgetting anything, Eddie? Gotcha.
Any questions?
Anyone up here?
Yes, I do have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
If we could go back to the...
Site plan?
Yes, sir. And again, I'm just assuming, and that's why I'm asking a question. But I assume the, the space that you have there now for all of the HVAC systems, all of that will be fenced in. That area will be fenced in.
Yes. So, so the dark area there is an actual structure. So, that'll be a building, housing, the chillers, the pumps, boilers, water heaters, tanks. Then behind it, there will be a fenced-in, screen-walled enclosure that will have the generator, will have the propane tanks, and I think electric guys might have a transformer or two out there.
And I guess I was, and I was comparing it to our new hospital we just built. And driving around that facility in the back, they've got that same type thing with the propane tanks and all, and all the HVAC, everything is enclosed in a fence. And they do have some sort of building out there.
Sure.
All right. The next question, inside the building. And this goes back to our basketball and our sports that we have during the fall and winter months where the weather can be iffy. So, our guys don't have to burn up in sweat running up and down the court. So, we'll be where we could be able to have air conditioning in that building when we have a game on, in that gymnasium. I mean, somebody could actually physically walk to it and flip a switch on and get it cool in there.
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Okay.
It'll have its own dedicated unit. So, really, you could have air conditioning running in either of those gyms and have the rest of the building off, saving your energy.
Okay. So, I mean, if I went and asked somebody, you know, they're like, "It's hot in here. Why don't we have any air going?" "Oh, we can't. You gotta wait till some switch is over," or this, that, and the other. We will have that capability to do that.
Yeah. There, I think you're referring to scheduling. So, maybe if it was an unoccupied period, it was, would naturally be off, but there will be manual override for anything like that.
Okay. All right.
Anyone else?
Dennis Boggs will come up and talk about fire protection and fire alarm system.
Thanks for the introduction. My systems are pretty straightforward and not very glamorous. So, we'll get through them as quickly as possible. As I just said, the plumbing systems are very conventional. And so, I'm only gonna talk about the systems that maybe you might have some questions about. Our water pressure on the site is variable. Some preliminary information indicated that the pressure has periods of low availability. So, in certain parts of the day, the, the water pressure is low on-site. And then, at certain parts of the day, the water pressure is actually higher than we want it to be. And this has caused us to design in a pumping system for both domestic water and the fire protection systems. But at the same time, we also have pressure-reducing valves for periods of the day where the pressure is higher than it needs to be for the system in order to protect the system, the fixtures, and the components from overpressurization. The domestic water system is pressurized by a pump in the main central plant that we've discussed. It is piped from the plant into the main building and is distributed around along with domestic hot water and a hot water return system to keep the hot water at a usable temperature throughout the building. The plumbing fixtures in the building themselves are very conventional. The water closets are gonna be manual flush valves with lavatories. And the gang bathrooms having multiple station labs where you have a single unit with three operating lavatories where three users can use it at one time. Those fixtures will be provided with infrared faucets, hands-free, but those are essentially the only hands-free fixtures that we'll be providing in the building. Everything else will be manually operated. The fixtures and all of the equipment, the piping systems, the routing through the buildings were all selected for easy usability, easy maintenance, and lower installed cost up front. The sanitary system is very conventional. It's your typical drainage system. The only special items we're gonna have in the drainage system will be acid neutralization tanks for the chem labs. And we will have a 3,000-gallon grease interceptor outside of the kitchen areas to intercept any grease-laden waste that comes out. So, you don't have any trouble on-site with your sanitary system. Domestic hot water is gonna be generated back at the central plant. We're gonna use propane boilers that will heat up water in a 1,000-gallon tank. That water will be used inside the main building. All of the outbuildings are gonna have their own dedicated propane water heaters in, in them. And initially, we've designed tank-style water heaters, but we're being asked to evaluate tankless water heaters in a couple of instances. And if the lifecycle cost analysis comes back favorably, we'll recommend switching over to a tankless water heater setup. We, we've yet to complete that task, but we will pretty soon. The fire protection system only consists of a sprinkler system within the main, middle, and high school building. None of the outbuildings require sprinkler systems per code, only the main school building. And again, due to the low and fluctuating water pressure on-site, we have provided an electric fire pump. It is in the back of the building, approximately in this location. And we have a bulk main that will distribute fire protection water throughout the building with zone valves located so that certain areas of the building can be shut down if there's a problem, maintenance required, modifications required. Nothing else controversial about the, the fire protection system. The building will be provided with a fire alarm system. And it's gonna be a fairly conventional system with the exception of instead of having typical horn strobes, which is what most people are used to in a building, which is just a flashing light and a, and a tone that sounds. We have exceeded the, the number of people allowed by code to use that system in this building in the assembly occupancy. And in that case, we had to go to what's called a voice evacuation system. And that's gonna consist of speaker strobes, which is essentially anywhere you would've seen a horn strobe, you would see the same device but with a speaker on it. And you'll get, essentially, in an alarm condition, you'll get three tones to let you know to pay attention to what's about to happen. And then after that, you'll get a voice instruction to evacuate the building if it's a fire, or to shelter in place if there's an internal lockdown or an external lockdown condition. Code has, has allowed us in educational facilities such as this to omit manual pull stations in public spaces where students can maybe get a little bit of time out of class by pulling the fire alarm. And so, the only pull stations that will be in the building will be in the admin areas where only the admin people can get to. Nothing else in the, in the common areas. And other than that, everything is, is pretty conventional. So, were there any questions about any of those systems?
None? Okay. Thank you.
Excellent.
Comment?
Okay.
I'm saying, I wanna make sure everybody didn't stand still. We will have a water line out and just cut off to a farm building. So, we will have water and power out to the building.
Right. I think Sam is gonna show that on the...
On the civil site plan, yes.
We're gonna, we're, we're gonna probably come off of here. I think Sam was talking about, we're gonna water line discovering out there for that.
For future, right. It'll be indicated future on our contract documents in order to be used when those buildings are constructed.
Future could mean future from today.
That's true.
Correct. Correct.
Could be there before the building is.
It could be. Yes, sir.
One of the really interesting things that Sam said earlier, he only turned his split system. I mean, if half the system that was found, you could still be reasonably comfortable, you know, it's on the functions, it'll basically have redundancy there so that you can still operate the region comfortably.
Right. It's like a N plus one, what we, in the electrical industry, we've called. So, each system, each, if one air handling unit went down, there, we're gonna tie the ductwork in so that you would not be completely without cooling or heating, as the case may be. So, you know, that could happen. So, it's a little bit of redundancy and backup. So, you can keep using the facility.
I have a question, but it probably is not for this gentleman. Do we have an estimated water usage per day on this school? Have an estimated sewer per gallon on the school?
We, we have both numbers. Both numbers were reported to the civil engineer. And I could dig through some of my emails and, and find them, but I only have a week's worth on my phone. But yes, those, those numbers have been generated and are available.
Yeah. I, I'd just like to know that for, for the future budget process. Because all of our schools, we don't have any sewer and any water. But I, I've seen that...
No, understood. Those, those numbers were, were necessary within the design team in order to design the pumping station and the domestic water system.
That's right. It's not, has nothing to do with design. It's just something that I wanted to know personally. Thank you.
We could get it, we could get it back.
Brian has it. Yeah. I can get with Brian later. I don't need it right now.
Okay. Any further questions on plumbing, fire protection, fire alarm?
So, you feel confident we'll have adequate pumping in?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just curious. You mentioned a fluctuation, sometimes too much, sometimes not as much as we would like.
Correct.
Is that because of the water pressure that's actually in the pipe that's already been laid?
Yes. So, this, this information that we have is modeled data from the existing water system.
Okay.
And it has to do with the way that the public utilities utilize their water tanks, essentially. They need to turn over the water in the tanks. So, they can't just leave them all the way filled all the time, or the water in the tanks would get stagnant. And so, they have to let those tanks empty out. And the lower the water level is in those tanks, the less pressure we have available throughout the system. So, it's, it's a need of theirs to operate their system in an, in an efficient and safe way to make sure they don't have bacteria growing in stagnant water. And, you know, this is, this is not uncommon.
Please accept that.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is it okay if these gentlemen from Pace retire from the meeting, or do you want them to stand by?
I'm fine.
Yeah, I think we're okay.
Okay. Thank you.
It's over our head anyway.
Very much. Great job, boys. And we'll be okay.
Thank you.
Our next, I'd, I'd like another gentleman. His name is Eddie as well, Eddie Evans, to come up and give a very brief summary. You've seen so much of the architecture. I know you probably have seen more than you want to, but Eddie's gonna still give you a brief summary. And he's been working really hard. And we'll get Diane and Dave to stand by in case he wants to ask them a question and have them participate so they won't have to walk up later. So, here's Mr. Evans, Diane Paulman, and Dave Bodie.
Hello. Thank you. We appreciate your time tonight. My name's Eddie Evans, and I'm the project manager with Blue Justice Upton for this school project. We've been working really hard lately with Mecklenburg County Public Schools, especially Mr. Nichols and a lot of the faculty members, trying to tweak this building footprint and the program and get it in line with the, what your needs are and what your requirements are. And also trying to meet the DOE guidelines and recommendations. Lately, we've had several different meetings to address classroom modifications and relocations and a lot of, lot of areas of the building for the career education center, multipurpose type spaces, and, and even the admin. One of the things that we've addressed lately is grouping all the middle school spaces by grade and the high school spaces by department. And we've also now combined the band for both high school and middle school with seating that will accommodate up to, and possibly a little more than a hundred. So, as, as we look at the plan here, the, the gymnasium for the middle school and high school essentially have been unchanged primarily due to, we, we came to some agreements with the seating capacity early on in the design. Although we have incorporated for inside track in the high school gymnasium, in the event that you have some inclement weather and, and you need to carry out some athletic functions, like on track and so on. We also have just finished working with the food service personnel here at Mecklenburg County Public Schools with some current criteria for different types of food service and things like that. And I know that she's working trying to get some current layouts to us so that we can go over those and make sure they can be incorporated into the plan without expanding that area. So, we'll know pretty shortly if, if we can do so. We also have, like I said, we've grouped a lot of these classroom spaces and incorporated several of the areas according to our latest directions from the personnel here at Mecklenburg County. And we've also made some adjustments in the guidance and the administration area. So, I think based on our last groups of meetings, we pretty much feel satisfied. We've covered all the needs and requirements that your faculty and staff have put towards for us to make modifications and changes. Do you guys have any specific questions you'd like to ask us?
I have one. Between the band room and the reading room or the media room, I see that double wall. So, I'm sure that's gonna be totally insulated and try to sound.
Yes, it's two purposes. That's a firewall location, and also, it's gonna help with the sound.
Okay. Yeah, that was just, I'd been asked that question myself, so.
And I would assume there will, in that band room, will be acoustical tiles and so forth that will sound some of the sound as well.
Oh, yes. That's correct.
Also, do we have any, Mr. Nichols, or maybe this is a question for our superintendent, but, you know, having an auditorium, you know, I'm hoping that drama and chorus are gonna be back in our school system to be able to utilize this nice auditorium that we're gonna build. Do we have space right now for a chorus room in our plans?
Well, right now, I think the idea, let me see if I can...
They'll probably use the band room.
Well, right now, the idea is, I think, band and chorus would potentially utilize the same space. And as far as your performing arts, I think a lot of that can also be conducted on the stage within the auditorium. And, and, you know, that's a pretty good place for them to practice anyway, because you've got all your sound and lighting systems in that area.
That was one of the primary reasons that we made sure we had moved the, that whole area here as close to the stage, right beside the stage.
Right. I mean, it makes sense.
So that we could take advantage of all of that for figure, chorus, and band.
Okay. And I went to, I won't call the school, but I went to Chesterfield County last week. My, my niece was in a, in a musical. And we were at one of the high schools. And during intermission, I was able to walk out in the hallway and I found myself close to the band room. And with us combining, and I see the storage here, but his biggest complaint at that project they did was storage. And he opened that closet and I was horrified. I mean, stuff falling over top of each other. You know, with us combining and making one band room, we have got to make sure that we have got adequate storage.
Right.
For, for our band and for its members. I mean, we're talking uniforms, instruments.
Exactly. Well, and, and what we've done here, we do have a small storage area here. As far as instruments, instead of creating a separate room, what we've done here, and we've done it multiple times, and it seems to work the best, we've got a niche in here. So, it's really an open area within the band room itself. So, we've got storage for instruments within that niche on these perimeter walls. We have some right at the front on both sides. And then all across the back of the band room, we have storage. So, it should be ample instrument storage within that space.
'Cause I was saying, but if we're combining, we're, what, 300 band students? Close to it?
No.
No.
No, we're not.
I don't know that we now even have 100 between the two of them.
The numbers have dropped.
Okay.
200 have dropped.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
But we wanna build them back up. Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Also, green... Also, greenhouses. Originally, there were greenhouses here on the sides beside our, and it was on both sides near our ag labs.
Right.
At the middle and the high school. And I see those have disappeared.
Well, what we've done is we've located those or intend to locate those back at the... Let's see, we'll go backwards here. We're intending to locate those back here at this future ag barn. It seems like that was the consensus, that they'd be better off in that location rather than here at the building.
Part of the problem is this is a two-story building.
Okay.
And they need as much sunlight as possible. There's a concern, if we get them too close to the buildings, the shadows morning or afternoon are gonna keep them from getting the light that they need. That's still yet to be worked out. Mr. Cypher's is having a meeting with the ag teachers to talk about the very best location for them to work on that. There could be room as well down here beside the fields at the middle school, but we don't want to get too close to the fields where the balls could be hitting them and having difficulty. So, you know, we gotta look and make the placement for it to be in the very best.
Right. And I was just, you know, just assuming again, you know, with the ag labs, because what we have now in our ag labs, our greenhouses are right there, coincide with them because of plants and different, whatever they do. You know, I think the teacher would need to be able to easily access that instead of having to walk up the field to, and place it somewhere else.
I mean, are those future, or are they in the plans?
Well, they're listed as future right now.
All right, 'cause, I mean, I hate to beat a dead horse here, but we have eight tennis courts. We don't have a tennis team. We have 14 guidance offices in this plan and four conference rooms. And not the first outdoor agriculture center at all. I would say 75% of this tax base is agriculture. I'm just saying.
Well, you know, if you guys would like us to go back and look at that, we can certainly do so.
I mean, am I wrong on my 14 guidance offices?
I don't know how many it is right off the top of my head, but...
Six on the second floor and one on the first floor for a middle and high?
Seven for each school.
Yeah, we've got seven for each school, I think.
So that's 14, and tennis courts, and we don't have a tennis team, correct?
Well, the tennis courts are also one of the items that we had talked about from the, with the athletic committee. But on a priority basis, they will be there if the funding is available for them. That's a lower priority than anything related to the agriculture building, because the agriculture programs are instructional. And you're exactly right.
Well, I mean, the barn says future, the tennis courts are in the plans.
Well, the recommendation, if I remember right from the athletic committee, was tennis courts. A greater priority was the auxiliary gym.
Right.
The consensus was the, we would prefer to have an auxiliary gym. And as I look at the plan, the auxiliary gym is future, and the tennis courts are here. We also talked about getting a price comparison before we move forward with either to see what the funding numbers would be. But the priority would be auxiliary gym prior to tennis courts.
And those are, that's exactly why we're having these meetings, is to make the decision about what's the priorities if, when the bids come back, we can't do it all.
Right. Well, the barn's not even in that bid.
The, a lot of the tennis athletics is in red with that in mind, that there's a priority concept for some of it. I mean, the main field is as well.
But we're not even bidding the agriculture areas. Correct?
We will be bidding the agricultural areas when, as we make the determination with the various, including the police department, because that's a staging area, what we need in that piece.
We can't even give our teachers a raise. What makes you think we're gonna be able to build this?
It's...
I mean, I'm just, I'm just a little frustrated because, never mind. I'm just gonna keep on that shit.
All right, with that being said, that was gonna be another one of my questions. On, and this is, I'm sorry, this is what I'm looking at.
Right.
Yes, sir. The red area that I would assume would have been the, the, what am I trying to say? The field houses. Is that the field houses there in the red?
No, this is the field house right here for the high school.
I'm looking right in front of the track.
Okay, yeah, that's the high school field house right there?
Yes, sir.
The red is the actual seating. That is the grandstand.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm sorry. I just wanted to make that clarification. And then also, in our CTE center, are we going to be, is it, will they be dedicated classrooms for all of our CTE programs? Or are we gonna be sharing space in that? And which classes would be shared?
Yeah, Diane will explain that to you. I know that some spaces could possibly be shared, but it depends on the equipment that's in the space.
So some direction we were given this week.
Yes, ma'am.
Am I talking loud enough? So a classroom here, you have the ag lab here. They have their own dedicated classroom. You have, let's see, that's HVAC. They would share classroom with the building trades. That was the direction we were given this week. Let's see here, we have the auto lab. They have a dedicated classroom. Welding is right here, and we were told that they could probably hold their classroom within the lab space because it's been grown, it's a larger space. But they could also use this classroom if needed. So there are some shared classrooms there.
So with us bringing welding back, you know, that machinery, I mean, I would just assume that they would need, so tell me again, where did you say they could share classroom space?
I'm sorry.
With the welding.
Welding right here, so you have auto lab?
Yes, ma'am.
And then you have the welding lab, and here's a classroom here.
Okay, so they could use that classroom space?
Or they could hold their classroom time in here, too.
Okay.
The way we lay it out.
Welding was a little bit smaller, but we just enlarged it based on some feedback. So now they could potentially hold a class inside the lab.
And welding is a program that's used by agriculture, by auto mechanics, by so many different areas in addition standing alone.
Right.
That's why it's been placed strategically so that they can all have access to that for when they need to learn the components that go along with that certification.
And so moving down from the welding, what are the rest, are any of those gonna be shared spaces?
These are all pretty much dedicated classrooms. Do you have?
I'm sorry, moving down from welding?
Moving down?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so this, actually, I just wanted to point out, this is called a Teal's Room, so that is a dedicated classroom. And then moving down, you have, I don't have it in front of me, and, let's see here. Is that early education? So that's a dedicated room for early education, early childhood development. Then you have ROTC, which they have specific needs for storage and classroom and some office space. So that's pretty much a dedicated room there. And then, what is?
Because the JROTC, they, I mean, that can't be a shared space, correct?
Right, that's their own space.
Okay.
And then also, we located that so that they have a door out to their outside space, which is a covered marking space.
Okay, so that will be the area out there to the right, that will be a fenced-in space?
Yes, yes.
For the JROTC?
That would be fenced in, yes.
Okay.
And this is covered right here. Okay. And then below JRO, JROTC, we have the health science classroom, which is, it could be used by other programs, but it is dedicated to the health science. And below that, we have the career center welcome. So we have a small space there. And we've added into that space a conference space and office with storage.
So the office, office space would be for our CTE director, correct?
Correct, correct, yes. And he has lots to store in that office, so we added storage space. And then below that, we've reconfigured the nurse, nurse aide program per their direction, so that they have a dedicated classroom, and then lab space off of that.
Okay. Because I think we've increased the number of beds there to what it was.
Right, I think it's now, let's see, we have six.
Six, okay. Anything else?
Yep. Are we gonna bid this athletic field with turf, or are we gonna bid it with grass?
Right now, we have planned it is to bid it with turf and grass.
To see what comes out. Right, good.
So he said he was gonna bid it with turf and grass?
Yes, that's correct.
Anything else? Well, yeah, yeah. All right. Mr. Stern of it made a comment, and again, you know, we were talking about when we met last week or whenever we met last, was the fact that we were setting priorities with this board. And, you know, again, I do see the tennis courts in there, but, you know, I think we were all of the consensus that we would rather see an auxiliary gym in place versus the tennis courts. So, you know, I don't know if that's something we can change moving forward. And then, you know, again, I just, I'm unclear about the barn and the agriculture piece of it. Can I get a definitive answer from you all? Are we gonna bid it with the barn, or are we gonna bid it without the barn in place on the property?
At this time, the barn is not included in the best bid.
Okay.
It's supposed to be a fine stand, it's coming through separate source.
Can you, if you don't design it, can you bid it as part of this?
If I'm trying to make it work, it's a little hard, you know, it's the least responsible. They got stuff up to drive enough work that you have to do.
Mr. Upton, bid us a $200,000 metal building, let it ride. That's all we need. That's a barn.
We can make it work.
Right.
Well, I mean, there are still significant questions for safety purposes of what's needed for staging. And I wanted to have conversation, and I told the board supervisors we would be having conversation with several of the companies as we want to do with all of this about what we would need to go into it. But I think we're not looking at classrooms. We've got classroom space built in here for, on both the middle school and the high school side. So maybe that would be the best way to put it, is to put aside a certain amount of money, you know, to be able to do that.
We can put the lounge in if you have, if you have someone that's undonated it, you know, what?
Well, I've never, I've never considered it as something to be donated. I think we could probably go after some grant funds and things to go along with it. But I know, there's always been a dedication to the board supervisors and to the community that we would have a strong agriculture program. We have the land, we have the space set up for it. But it was my understanding that we would be able to do that with bond money that we have in place to be able to put that in play, to put that in, and, you know, setting it up. But it might be the easiest way to do it, to go ahead and put it into the specs.
I mean, let's bid it as an alternate, draw a barn, not a $900,000 barn. We don't need brick and classrooms.
You're not gonna have classrooms, and you're not gonna have restrooms, and...
Just a simple function area, and then bid it as an alternate. And that way, if we comes, if our budgets come in line, we can build it. And hopefully, they will. And if they don't come in line, we can build it.
What size?
You know?
What size, what do you think?
I would think, you know, a 40 by 6 deal, you know? I mean, I can get a lot of cows in that. I own one.
40 feet by 6 and 8, okay.
What do you think? I mean, you're a farmer.
Well, I mean, Mr. Stern was talking about him storing lawn equipment up here for the field.
That was another component that we were looking at.
I mean, a 40 by 6 is not gonna cut.
All you gotta do is put a lean-to off of the 40-foot side, and I can park every tractor you got over there. I mean, we're not gonna be raising crops out there.
Hey, that's fine.
I'm just trying to get you...
I'm just saying...
I'm trying to get you something.
Well, obviously, you're the only one helping me, and I appreciate it.
You know, I wanna get...
Well, no, and I agree, too. And this was a big part of it when we came to consolidation. This man sitting beside me was the one that made the motion to consolidate. And a key factor for him was that barn in agriculture. And it is a huge part of this county, and we want our children to have every opportunity there is for the agriculture piece. End of story.
Well, and I...
And again, and it just bothers me that, you know, again, it's been talked about, and we keep, you know, I could have a million dollars in the bag. You don't know if I've got it or not. But, you know, nobody has made a physical dollar commitment to this. And it needs to be part of the schematics of this drawing.
I agree with you.
End of story.
Well, take the nine tennis courts out. What do they cost?
What is the average cost of one tennis court?
If his barn's big enough, we buy tennis court.
I don't know right off the top of my head, but we can find out and see what that trade-off might be. If that's an option.
I don't, I don't look at it as a trade-off. I've never thought of the barn as being something that would be below something else.
No, I just mean if the tennis courts are not that important right now.
Mr. Upton, Mr. Ritchie, as the athletic committee has said before, the tennis courts compared to other portions of the, what we're trying to get, the tennis court is by far the lowest priority. It is lower than the barn. So if it's the board's pleasure, if we want to get the barn put in, take out the tennis court and leave the tennis court possible as a future thing, but the priority has to be towards the barn over the tennis courts. The priority was also said over the auxiliary gym, over the tennis court. But evidently, it was lost in translation, because the tennis court is here and the auxiliary gym and barn isn't. So I guess we need to recalibrate and look at our priorities.
Well, I mean, I don't know anything about cost, but I'm guessing to build these tennis courts probably costs $300,000. Guessing. If you're gonna build a gym, you're talking about three and a half million.
Gym would be, would be, I think it's a million, 1.7, I think.
Right, so it's...
Well, the consensus would be a barn over the tennis court. I think that's the consensus of the board.
Yeah, if we, in other words, if we could save 200, 300,000 by not having a tennis courts and get the barn in the way it should be built, you know what I'm saying? I think the county, the students and the board would rather see the barn.
You talk about the barn usually going along with that, it's greenhouses. So we got that barn and greenhouses, and the greenhouses are brought up. And we usually got a lab that goes greenhouses, and then greenhouse, but those go in hospitals. So where, let me make sure I'm following the whole pack, which, what do you think? That we got that just barn or the greenhouses and...
I think, I think what we should do, Bill, is bid, all right, you're gonna bid this basic package just like it is. Take out the tennis courts, maybe put, leave two in. Leave two tennis courts, take out six. Leave two tennis courts in, bid the barn and the, and the greenhouses as alternate one. Go ahead and design us a barn and build it as an alternate. And that way, when we get the numbers back, when the contractor bids it, if this big school comes in at 800, 80 million or 90 million, and we've got enough, and hopefully, we're gonna have enough to do the barn, and maybe we've got some more. But if it doesn't, at least we know on budget that we can build a school. And then we can go back and start fighting somebody else to build a barn. But if we don't put the barn in the bid to get it costed out, we're never gonna know what it really costs, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And the locality is, I mean, we've got great local people, but it's kind of, and I'm not gonna say anything, but Louis Ashworth, who I was on the board with one time, said, when we built South Hill Elementary School, he made the statement on his board, if we don't start another school on the western end of the county, you'll never get an elementary school. And that happened. That's 14 years ago when he said that, and there's still not an elementary school on the western end of the county. So if we don't do what we're gonna do now and say we're gonna plan ahead to do it, you know, everybody will backpedal on us, and then all of a sudden, we're left without the barn. So if we can get the barn in there by trade-offs, let's try to figure out how to do that. Don't you think so?
We make recommendations as to where we need to go to get a barn, and we'll come up with a concept for the barn with the price, and you can weigh it out, have to...
Right, and it doesn't have to be a 900,000 or million-dollar barn, you know, but something that works.
Coming to, amount to there, it won't cost you anywhere close to that.
Yeah, we need water and everything out there, so we...
900,000, I assume, so, you know, you can have a large barn, you can have storage, you can have classrooms, and a tall... you can have classrooms, you can have toilets.
Right.
But then you draw all that stuff, you can get plenty.
Yeah, and that way we can go ahead and finalize this thing and move forward so we can get a building built.
We will, we will follow those instructions. We will look at two tennis courts, we will look at a inexpensive barn and, uh, and I guess maybe one greenhouse by the barn or this is the barn or be one greenhouse somewhere close to school.
I mean, if ag kids can walk out there to look at, look at an animal, I think that people can walk out there and look at a flower. And it's all out there, and we have water out there anyway, so.
We have water and we have flowers.
So everything's there and it's got room for, for sunlight and everything we need.
And you talked to the, the ag teachers about that already, didn't you, Paul? The location of the greenhouse?
Mr. Cypher's is, is working with the ag teachers on what the location.
Yeah, so they can decide what's best for that better than we can.
So we will show you a concept of the greenhouse and the barn that comes in the ag area and, uh, and present enough information so you can make a decision. We'll have that down in three seconds.
All right, did the lockers fall under you? I just wanted to know, I get asked that question.
In the building, yes.
All right, did, have they decided anything about, just, I'm just interested, I don't have a, a side, I'm not on any side on that, I just wanted.
Yeah, I don't remember the exact number, but I think on the middle school side, it was like 150, 150, and it was 75 on the high school side. And then we have some cubbies that we've located just adjacent to the cafeteria on both sides so that students can have a place to put things when they get off the bus.
So is that what schools are doing now?
Uh, it's a variation of those kinds of things.
Okay, how, how do you hand out 75 lockers? I mean, who gets it out of the 1,300 students? Who gets to?
I don't know.
The winner gets it.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't under.
Well, the idea of that was that it would, instead of having out lockers for the full year, that as students needed them, they would make, you know, the administration aware and they would be able to work with them on a, a basis of what was needed.
Right, so they'd be just allowed to carry their bags?
Uh, I've, I've heard, we've heard many times, we've had many discussions with teachers and others about the need. Of course, we've had conversations on, among this board too. My understanding from the architects is that most schools are not designing lockers now. We're wanting to put some in to make sure that there are, there are some available. But, um, there's a number, I mean, we, we are limited on space. And the lockers take up significant space in the hallways or from what would have been classrooms. So we looked at a compromise of having, I think, 10% of the student body being able to, at one time, look at lockers. Now, the board has the right to come in and say, take them out or put them all in and we'll find the space for it.
Yeah, but $250 a square foot for space, for floor space in a school, I mean, that just makes a locker kind of expensive.
It does.
Do we have a price on what a locker, the lockers will cost?
Do you have a price?
Don't know right off the top of my head, uh, but, you know, there's a lot of ways that different schools handle this situation, some are better than others. And, you know, one, one thing that schools have done is they, uh, and, and some people don't like this, but the, the students' chairs have a space under them, they can put their bags so they don't have them in the floor, that's the big issue. When they put them in the floor, it blocks traffic and circulation around the, the classroom. There's also been some discussions about having some cubbies in each of the classrooms that they could store their bags in. I mean, there's a lot of different things and depending on who you talk to, at what school and what works for them, it's all over the place.
Well, that's good, furniture design can solve the problem. Good.
One other question, just a basic classroom, average science classroom, square footage.
I think the high school is about, um, eleven plus prep, so it's about 13, 50, 1,400, something like that.
Wow.
Uh, and middle school is just slightly under, I think it's, yeah, it's about 12, 50 or 13. It's some, it's not a big difference in the two.
That's for science, that's not for standard classroom.
Right.
So, okay, so a standard classroom, I'm sorry, like an English classroom or a math?
Oh, they're 700.
700, okay.
They're, they're designed for, by state regulations for 24 to 25 students per class.
That's correct, yeah. The, the entire program that we've been working with, uh, all along is based on the DOE guidelines and recommendations, and that's a student teacher ratio of 24 to 1.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Thank you, you've done a great job.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Well, thank, we finished and I do want you to know that there's nothing in here that we're doing for our own benefit. We're trying to follow instructions, you know, with the barn and tennis courts and everything. And, and I know it's a tug and it's a challenge because priorities are different with different people and things are different as we go. But we are working hard and we will continue to work hard to give you the exact school you want. So when you give us instructions like tonight, we will go and respond to that and come back with real information that will be, hopefully be very helpful. So we will do everything we can to make sure that you guys are totally comfortable as far as humanly possible we can make it, okay? So thank you so much.
All right, Mr. Upton, before you leave, will we hear about the safety type equipment later? Like video and all that type of things, all the, or metal, I mean, what, all that school safety related stuff?
Yeah, I apologize, today, we, we've had some meetings, but today, actually, for three and a half hours, we met, we had, uh, boot service and we had technology here. And we talked a lot about that in detail, but we were guessing that you didn't want to take that much time tonight, so we excused the technology person. But, uh, we were talking about, you know, the way the cameras, the cameras, the different, uh, technology for security and safety. And, uh, we could reconstruct that, uh.
Basically, there is nothing except bathrooms that are hidden from cameras viewing.
We have, we have cameras around the school, inside the school and almost every space. Of course, not the restrooms. We have cameras outside, they will show your school. We even talked about, and I think we ended up with putting a couple of cameras on the roof in case kids get up on the roof and try to get in the mischief. You wouldn't think you would need that.
Yeah, there you were.
Yeah. And, and also ask them to provide, uh, at least a, a location with the conduit for cameras at each entrance. So down the road, if we need to actually move security out close to the entry to campus, we could set up a guard station there or at least a video station so people could come up and hit a button and announce themselves after school is started. Or even go to a point, if, if, if things get more volatile in terms of safety for schools, we could have a ROTC officer at the entry to the school and, and move security perimeter from the building outside. So we're trying to plan ahead for those kind of things as well. Uh, so we've done a lot. We had our security person make recommendations and we had Mr. Evans and Eddie Abrams, who was here earlier, told them the electrical, uh, and our technology consultant worked together and come up with the locations for cameras and, and the type of hardware and the door locks. And we met with Mr. Dalton about the kind of locks and, and everything that he is, uh, actually, we had pretty good detail meeting, uh, so I kinda wish.
Has the safety committee met on that too, already? As long as you, okay, then I don't need to worry about it, they're taking care of it.
We had, we had a good meeting today with your staff, real good input and, and they feel pretty comfortable about where we are, I believe that's safe to say. You're gonna ask, uh, Mr. Dalton, do you feel, do you have any comments, Mr. Dalton?
I'm gonna catch you up pretty quick when we're talking about, Mr. Chairman, as far as the safety aspect.
You, you don't need to, if, as long as the safety committee's involved and they're happy with it, that's fine with me.
I think they hit a markup from the safety committee and they're pretty much used that markup as far as camera placement.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
There's also been, on the safety piece, considerable conversation with the company that has the, um, software that every teacher, every classroom has a button that can set that up and all the police throughout the, the county police throughout the system, the county would be knowing exactly where there's a problem.
Okay.
And it sets it up so that if it's a problem in one particular area, we would know and another area could actually go outside to get away as opposed to blocking down some of this piece of it.
Okay.
Also recently, Mr. Evans came and met with the same group of people. We also had the sheriff there, one of his deputies and the fire marshal and the resource officers. So we had a lot of detailed input. I think you would feel pretty good about that.
I'm sure I would, thank you.
Mr. Upton, as we look at this and as we've had the conversation about the basic piece, and obviously, I mean, we're right, we want to do the barn, but the auxiliary gym, we want, I would, we want that to be a part of the basic plan and see how that pricing comes out to come back to us so that we could put that in, that is a priority.
So we're gonna build that?
Well, the only thing is, and I hate to be, deliver bad news, we, as we understand the budget, we don't have funds for it, but I will, I will design it and put it in and follow the instructions. But, but I'm telling you, based on our budget, which we are even updating again based on, uh, these things, that we will be exceeding the budget, but maybe we will have.
Had we not talked about that as a, one of the options that, with the funding came in, if the budget was right, that that would be a priority?
Uh, we can do that. What I would be doing is asking all of my team, I wish they were here, so I could ask them right here on the spot, I'm asking them to design stuff beyond the budget without any additional pay. I don't want to ask you for more money to pay them to do that, but I will try to get them to do it. If they will do it without charging me, I will not charge anything for the work that we do and we will include that. And I will have that conversation with them to see if I can coerce them into doing it.
If you bid it, because if it comes in, if it overruns with it.
Okay.
We'll scrap this and it'll take another year to rebid it. So you'll shut the bidding down for a year.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate that, I wish to everything was.
Did you want to say anything else? Okay, I appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Upton.
Thank you so much, you guys have a wonderful evening and we'll be talking to you soon with answers to these things as we promised. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. So, um, we will be voting on these plans, are, are we being asked to vote on these plans Monday night at our regular December school board meeting?
That's correct, right, Mr. Nichols?
That is correct, yeah.
So will we have the information on the, I'm sorry, Mr. Upton, will we have the information with the barn and the gym and all back in there before Monday night's meeting?
If it's okay with you, I would suggest that you vote on them with the exception of pending further information on the barn, the gym and the tennis courts, if you can do that. And that way we can move ahead on the other and then we can make the decisions on this.
Mr. Upton?
Yes, sir.
You said that the tennis courts, if they were removed, then that will put the barn in line as a priority, correct?
Uh, priority wise, but dollar wise, it probably won't pay for it, but it would certainly help. If we cut back to, say, two tennis courts, we will save some money and we can put that either toward the barn or toward the greenhouse or toward the auxiliary gym.
Well, the barn, the.
The barn is the first priority, I understand.
So if we have to remove the tennis courts to get the barn, that should be the way we go.
Okay.
I understand the auxiliary gym costs a lot more. But I thought you said it was a good comparison, if the tennis courts were removed, that could go a lot towards that barn.
Oh, it could, it could, it could be a good chunk of money to pay for the barn and I don't know if it will get us there.
Is there any use to having two, two tennis courts? I mean, is there any use at all to have two tennis courts? I mean, it's not enough to have a tennis program, so. Seems like to me, like, you, you'd either have enough or you'd go down to zero.
The last meeting we had, it was said that the recommendation would be, um, the priority would be the auxiliary gym and the barn or the tennis courts. But what this shows is that the, the tennis courts are back. What I'm saying is, if the priority is to remove the tennis courts for the barn, that's the way we need to go.
And that's all eight of them? Go ahead and remove all of them?
All eight, okay.
Yeah.
Here's the problem. We keep putting things in this and we're gonna bid it and it's gonna come in over budget and then we're gonna go back to the drawing board and we're gonna try to bid it again and nobody's gonna want to bid on it because the contractors are not gonna keep playing this game. They're gonna bid and if we kick this thing out because it's over budget, they're gonna wash their hands of it and say, well, I'm not gonna bid anymore, that's ridiculous. That's the reason, the architect knows what cost per square foot is and he's got us pretty much on budget. We have got to bid what he's, what he's suggesting and bid the other things as alternates to see where we come in. At least if it comes in under budget, uh, we can take the extra money we have left over and assign it to something else. But to put all of this under one blanket and bid it, we may as well go home now because we're gonna, we're gonna prolong this process six to 12 months by doing it that way.
No, I don't think we're putting it all under at one time. I think we're saying the priority is the barn over tennis court and to remove the tennis court.
Then what, what we're saying is, we want to bid the basic school package, which we're gonna vote on Monday night, and then we're gonna bid, uh, the barn and the greenhouses as an alternate and then we're gonna bid, we're gonna bid a, a gym as an alternate and see where the numbers come in.
No, what I was saying is, we're gonna do the basic bid, the basic bid includes the barn. The basic bid does not include the tennis court or the auxiliary gym. The auxiliary gym would be extra.
An alternate.
An alternate.
Okay.
The auxiliary gym is the alternate, the barn is the priority, the tennis courts removed.
Okay.
But have the barn as a primary in the initial.
Okay, well, that's all we gotta do is, is give him direction on what to do and then we'll.
Is, do we have that consensus as a board that we can have the barn as a priority, remove the tennis court, get the price of the gym as an alternate?
And did you want the tennis courts as an alternative too?
No.
Just get rid of them completely?
We can, because of cost.
And, and, look, if it comes in and our bids all come in and we've got $200,000 left over, we can always add, add them.
Right.
Because that's a grading problem, that's not like building a building. It's, a tennis court is not a structure.
Right.
It's a flat. Where it keeps a place, a place there on the site, so that.
Keep it graded, put the money.
So we can always add those out next to the barn somewhere.
So just so we, just so we clear, the barn is part of the initial, the basic package.
Okay.
The barn is the basic package bid, the tennis courts are removed.
Okay.
The auxiliary gym is an add-on.
Add-on, so we have one add-on then?
I got you.
Okay.
We good with that?
I'm good with that.
And I hate to be dumb, but that means that greenhouse is not part of what you just said.
And I, and I want to be able to, I'm sorry, and I want to be able to refer back to Mr. Cypher, who is our CT director. If we've got an ag program, we gotta have a greenhouse. Uh, and that just makes common sense to me. You know, I don't have a lot of it, but that, part of it does. So, you know, I, I think that that needs to be part of this package as well.
So you want to make the greenhouse, uh, also an add-on like the auxiliary gym sounds like?
My biggest concern, and everybody's looking at me like I'm crazy because of this barn, but the board supervisors gave us $100 million. Correct. Now, if I'm wrong at any point in time, somebody please correct me because I, I'm wrong a lot. And we got a rendering from you that did not have the auxiliary gym or the barn. And then from that, you said if we wanted the auxiliary gym and the barn, we needed another $13 million. Is that correct?
The auxiliary gym was part of that for sure, the barn, I forget, I lose track of exactly how that moved in and out.
To upgrade to the barn and auxiliary gym and to upgrade the auditorium and things like that was $13 million.
Auditorium for sure and additional classrooms, yes.
So we went to the board supervisors and they gave us.
Yes.
The additional funding. But two of the components that we asked funding for are not in this. That is my only concern, is that we asked for it, we got it, and now we're not doing it.
And I.
That is, that is my concern.
Feel pretty much the same way you do.
If I read the piece of paper, and I have it right here, that the board supervisors used to vote on it that night, they gave us $20 million, and I got this from Greg Gordon. The $20 million was for 13 to 14 million dollars for extra classroom space. It didn't specify barn or auxiliary gym. And the other 6 million was for the sewer line. And that's in the wording of the motion because I got a copy of it.
Okay, well then I'm wrong.
It was, I mean, seriously, I.
We'll just trash the barn in, it don't bother the man.
No, we already said we're gonna put it in there, but I mean.
I, I was under the assumption that the money was given to us for specific things we asked for. And if it was not, then that's fine. I'm just trying to make, the board supervisors hold the purse strings. I'm trying to do the best I can by them and the people of this county. But if they're happy with not having a barn, then we won't have a barn.
Well, with y'all's permission, I'm gonna go back and I'm gonna do some work on the. barn, I'm going to do some work on the greenhouse, and I'm gonna do some work on auxiliary gym, or at least restore it, and then we can try to figure out the best way to get from this point to that point.
Because like Mr. Edward says, we don't need a million dollar barn. It needs to have an office and one bathroom, and that's it. It needs a dirt floor, and-
'Cause now you has four bathroom, I was just gonna give him a little bit. But you're gonna splurge.
Well, depending on how far it is from the-
I'm just teasing.
I mean, I think the, 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 make us have bathroom.
Don't get angry with me, I'm just picking on you.
But I mean, the inside can be finished by building a tree.
Yes.
I mean, that could be a whole semester or a whole year's work, doing that, or we could put lawnmowers in it, or whatever.
Yes, I understand what you're saying.
But I mean, now that, he's brought that to my attention, though.
I'm trying to pull it up, I got it right here somewhere.
I'm gonna just give up my fight, because they just said for classrooms.
Mr. Campbell, what happened, there are some classrooms added that weren't in the initial drawing. There's a cost for those classrooms.
Yeah.
But we know that the priority for instruction, we have a strong FFA program. We do not have a tennis program. We have to build the programs that we currently have and expand in the future. So as, I guess the board's consensus is, do away with the tennis courts, divert that money towards the barn as a priority in the initial drafting.
Right.
The second, as an add-on, the auxiliary gym.
Okay, now, I'm gonna correct myself, because I'm reading this, and what they voted on was $10 million for, and the auxiliary gym was in at 1.350,000.
Something like that.
School, stadium, and fieldhouse, 1,200-seat auditorium, so they gave us $10,591 for that. And then they added, for future classrooms, 16 total, and sanitary sewer, $10,389,000. And they didn't mention the barn anywhere.
Okay.
I mean, it's not in there, I'm reading it, but I don't know why it wouldn't have been in.
Saves you a lot of work, Mr. Upton.
Listen, I'm still gonna do something to try to advance the barn, okay?
I mean, I'm the first to admit I was wrong, I'm still gonna fight for it.
No, no, I wouldn't say you're wrong, because we've talked about this barn so much, we're just all, here's the thing, I appreciate, everybody's working hard to do the best they can for the county, and you guys are working really hard, and you spend a lot of hours. And it's a wrestling, because it's really a challenging and a balancing act, and we will get, we'll find a way to get there. I've heard often that maybe there were people that were gonna donate resources to build a barn, and we were hoping that would, that would happen, but evidently that's not coming to fruition, at least not yet, but maybe we can struggle a little harder for that angle too. So we can work together and get these things done somehow.
And, you know, I appreciate the fact that you all are here tonight, because, again, I'm not a contractor, I'm not a builder, I'm a retail florist in a gift shop, but I am here representing my constituents in the fifth district of Mecklenburg County. So, you know, I don't want to be played down if I have a question to ask or something moving forward, because, again, this thing is gonna be up and running right along, way after I'm dead and gone, multiple, 20, 30 years after I'm dead and gone, it's gonna still be up. So I just want to make sure that I'm doing the right thing, or I'm voting for the right thing.
Well, in my honest opinion is, you're all working really hard trying to get there, and I think your comments are very appropriate and good, and we will find a way to get the best results by trying like we are tonight.
I'm just happy you're not working by the hour.
I appreciate you guys so much. We will, we will go back to drawing board and get back to you, Mr. Nichols, and show you what our thoughts are, and you can tell us to get lost, or you can say, let's talk to the board about it again, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, I appreciate you very much, so, good night.